The in-person meeting and livestream is also being provided with ASL and captioning. People with disabilities requiring additional accommodations to participate in the meeting can email Laura-BCHS-qualified interpreter at Michigan dot G O B. For the public comment part of the meeting, we will take comments if time is permitting. The in-person audience will give comments first, then those on Zoom. We are using the Zoom webinar platform and your video and audio are currently shut off. When it is time, participants on the Zoom who wish to comment should type them in the chat feature. If you wish to be on camera, click the icon at the bottom of the screen to raise your hand, and then we will recognize you and ask you to turn on your video and audio. If possible, please keep your public comments limited to three minutes. Like I said, we apologize, we are running behind. Thank you for joining today, and now I will turn it over to the B C H S Director Larry Horvath.
Thank you. My name is Larry Horvath. I'm the Director for the Bureau of Community and Health Systems inside the Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs. Want to thank everybody for attending today, and what we wanted to really do is to kind of give a flavor of what the draft rules are going to look like. We are going to release the draft rules once we have our video with A S L, closed captioning, and voiceover those, we will release the full set of rules, but we still wanted to give you an idea of what the proposed rules are. Just to give you a little background, our program is regulated by statute, and so we have the statute which is Act 204, the Deaf Person's Interpreter Act statute. And when we, and it gives us the authority to create administrative rules, and really the rules are, we're going to follow this statute, but it gives us some areas that if it's not clear in the statute and we need additional authority, this is what the rules will do. So the rules in the statute pertain particularly to qualified interpreters in Michigan. And in our rule set, we will never repeat what's already in statute, and we cannot conflict with what's in statute, as well as we can't do something that the statute doesn't allow. So all of this is done to help us regulate those that are certified in Michigan, and I'm going to turn it over to Heather Hosey, the Division Director, to do the beginning update on the rule set.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for coming. I'm going to go through the, our rules where it broke up into six different parts. So I'm going to go through the first three, and then Heather and Katrina and Colleen will be jumping in after to discuss the other parts. So first, and then also, we're just going to really look at the highlighted changes that we had. It's not necessarily going to be every rule that's in the rule set. So if there's something in existing rule that wasn't changed, we won't be mentioning it today. We're just really trying to hit the highlights. So we did rescind some of the fees that were in the administrative rules, and we want to establish those in the act. So those were changed. The other area that we changed was the Quality Assurance Certification. That's an old test that's no longer being offered, or an old exam and certification that's not offered anymore. So we removed that from the rules. We did update the Qualified Interpreter Definition to reflect the statute. We also further define the scope of an individual that interprets for a deaf, deaf-blind, or hard-of-hearing person, that they have to hold a state certification or be listed on a registry. And when they're offering services, and this is the important part, in a court, a state government proceeding, where, and where an accommodation is being required. We did change a little bit the three standard levels. So we no longer have the three standard levels that are proposed. We updated the levels to Basic and Advanced and Educational Q I's. The rules describe the setting in which each certification can participate and interpret. And then we further defined the endorsements under each of the two levels in the rules. We also added a training opportunity to give individuals an option to offer interpreting services before they hold a certification. So, but that would exclude legal proceedings. But the individual, if they're enrolled in or graduated from a course for interpreting at a university or college, they could practice their interpreting skills until they pass their certification or their exam at advanced levels. And then they can do that for up to two years. So that'll give people time to take the exams, practice, and keep using their hands when they haven't had a chance to take those, the exams. We also offered a option for mentoring. So if somebody is a qualified interpreter at maybe a basic level and they're seeking advancement, we offer a mentorship opportunity so people can work with other interpreters that they can maybe train with until they can get their advanced level. With that, we did outline some supervision requirements for that. Obviously, we want to make sure that people are properly supervised to ensure effective communication. We also talked about, or created a new section to highlight the rights for the deaf, deaf-blind, and hard-of-hearing person. So we talked about consent in that section for, if they're being, if a deaf person or a hard-of-hearing, deaf-blind person is being offered services by someone who's not certified, we'd want to make sure that there's consent obtained for that. And we also described emergency settings in which that might be appropriate. We also talked about in that section, underqualified individuals and the consent for those, as well as making sure individuals aren't being coerced into being signed, signing any of those consents and making sure that they're fully on board and aware of what they're consenting to. We also re-formatted our advanced notice to the Appointing Authorities section to make it a little more easy to read and make it more understandable. And then lastly, in that section, we tried to make the rules more concise by including the verification of interpreter qualification section, and we removed in that section the $35 service fee. So that kind of goes with our first point in this, that some of those fees, we wanted established under the act and not under the rules. Moving on to part two of the rules, this section is the minimum credential requirement. So that would cover certification types, exceptions to the 4.0 educational standard endorsements, temporary credentials and endorsements, and then lastly, deaf interpreters. So I mentioned earlier that we now have two levels instead of the three basic, or the three standard levels. So we went from B E I one, B E I two, and B E I three, and updated those levels to the Basic Q I and Advanced Q I with endorsements under the Advanced Q I. Some of the settings in the Basic Q I, just to give you an example of what to be expected, it would be low-risk work, non-complex proceedings such as workshops or general presentations, weddings, post-secondary vocational trainings, things like that. Our advanced settings would require a little, a little more guidance as far as if they were working in a government setting, something to do with finance or employment, medical or mental health care. Those areas would require proper endorsements as well, but that would fall under the advanced setting. We further divide, to find the educational qualified interpreters and what settings they can work in. So the educational, elementary educational certification would allow the interpreter to interpret for children from pre-K to sixth grade. And then our secondary educational certification allows the students to work with the qualified interpreter from seventh to twelfth grade and up to age 26 for a student if they have the proper documentation. One area that we heard a lot of feedback on was deaf interpreters. So that was added, and I'll go into a little more detail on that later in our update, but we did add that. We also wanted to make sure that we drove home the point that endorsements are necessary for things like medical, mental health, and legal settings. Let's see. So deaf-blind endorsement, we removed that as an endorsement, and we'll go into further detail on that later, but that's no longer one of the endorsements that were included in the rules. We also added, if we're using educational interpreters that are, that are not, not meeting the 4.0 or higher standard, that we have to ensure consent of the parent and guardian to use an interpreter. Also added a requirement for the school to maintain the documentation. Now, this is something that we're still talking about with M D E and getting, we recently got feedback from them. So this is possibly a changing area, but this is where we're at right now. But at this point, we're, we're hoping that the, to get some more school support in maintaining some of this documentation and encouraging the, the 4.0 testing of the individuals. So the next area I wanted to cover was to continue the C E U's for medical and mental health and legal endorsement. It'll be 2.0 C E U's. But there, we're going to talk a little more about those endorsements and the minimum credentials shortly here. We added an allowance for the Board to recommend temporary new credentials. So if there's something that we don't, that we don't necessarily have right now, but it's a new credential that may be offered by another state or something in the state of Michigan, we'd like our Board to be able to weigh in on that and say whether or not that certification would be acceptable in Michigan. We also created a section for deaf interpreters, like I mentioned, to increase the chances for, hopefully for employment opportunities, also adding additional support to the deaf, deaf-blind, and hard-of-hearing community. The things that we outlined for the deaf interpreters is that they have to hold an associate degree or higher, submit proof of deafness, have a score of four or higher in the American Sign Language Proficiency Interview, or advanced or higher in the Sign Language Proficiency Interview for American Sign Language. And then lastly, to complete 40, 40 hours of interpreter training. And that concludes part two of the highlights. In part three, that's the section talks about minimum standards of practice. So professional contact, educational standards, and V R I requirements, which I know is of big interest for many people. So if requested, a Q I or a qualified interpreter has to provide proof of current certification and endorsement. So that means showing a valid I D with a photo, as well as their certification level. If anybody asks for it, if they're, you know, a deaf, hard-of-hearing, or deaf-blind individual, or somebody who's employing the, the qualified interpreter, if they ask for proof of certification, that's something that would be expected. Also, in educational standards, we adopted the Council for Higher Education Accreditation, which requires colleges and universities to be accredited by C I A. And then as far as the V R I changes that we made, we made it more concise and added the following items. So consent by the deaf or hard-of-hearing person, which, you know, we talked about today just before this meeting, on our board meeting, about the importance of getting consent for those that are expected to use V R I. Also, the consent has to be retained by the Appointing Authority or whoever hires that company or individual to do the V R I services. They have to maintain that consent between the deaf individual and the interpreter and the Appointing Authority. And then lastly, that they have to, the Q I has to show their full name and proof of certification and endorsements on the video screen to the deaf or hard-of-hearing person and the Appointing Authority before starting the V R I session. I know that's been some feedback that we've received, that people sometimes get on V R I sessions, and they don't have, they don't know if the person's qualified, if they don't, they don't know if they're sort of qualified in Michigan, or maybe another state, or a state that maybe doesn't require certification. So we hear that this is a very important piece to certification and demonstrating certification when we're using V R I especially. And with that, I will turn it over to Heather.
Hello, this is Heather Keel. I'm starting with part four, Qualified Interpreter Certification Process, the application. So the section for good moral character requirements that has been rescinded. We added the D I credential to this section indicating the rules that they have to follow when requesting or maintaining this certification. We added that an application is considered withdrawn if it's not completed within 90 calendar days. Once the application is considered withdrawn, a new application, supporting documentation, documentation and fees would have to be submitted. If a Q I's contact information changes, they're required to notify the department and update that information. Part four B, testing. It was clarified that the B E I certification, if it slaps for a year or more, that the interpreter would need to retest. Current rules state the qualified interpreter has to retest after 90 days. Clarified if it's been more than one year since the interpreter laps, they have to meet their C E requirements, pay the renewal fee, and submit an application for renewal. I'm okay, I'm okay. Added language stating that an application to take the B E I is valid for one year from the date the application is received by the department. And lastly, in this section, we clarified that if the applicant cancels and does not reschedule and complete an exam within one year, a refund is not issued and the fees are forfeit. And part four C, renewals, we removed the late renewal fees for 45 and 90 days. Aligned renewal dates, allowed the department to align renewal dates that are issued by the department for those that hold either E I P A, R I D, or B E I to one renewal date versus multiple dates. Added that after 30 days lapsed, a certification will be considered expired, and a Q I will cease practice as a Q I. Clarified that renewal applications that are incomplete must submit complete information within 90 days of the department notifying the applicant. Or the applicant must resubmit a new application and fees. And starting with section four D is Katrina.
Hi, I'm Katrina Johnson. I am a human resource developer supporting the Qualified Interpreter Program. Starting with part four D, Continuing Education. Continuing education requirements for state certification, department records, and the audit process. We have added a table, a chart, to help summarize continuing education units based on your credentials. Of those listed, there's a requirement of 4.0 C E U's of professional studies, 2.0 in ethics, not more than 1.0 C E U of general studies, at least 1.0 C E U of deaf-blind, and at least 1.0 C E U for an education. And then you can view the totals based on the chart. Please note that the educational C E U's are for those interpreters working in the educational field, and these are not in addition to the above requirements. They can be within professional studies as well and ethics. And then for the endorsements, at least 2.0 of medical, mental health C E U's and 2.0 C E U's for legal endorsements. And any D I that works in an educational environment must also complete the educational-related C E U's of the 1.0. So the, these new rule changes required, previously it was 0.8, or only individuals that had a deaf-blind endorsement were required to complete the 0.8 deaf-blind C E U's every four years. But now there's a requirement of 1.0 deaf-blind C E U's for all qualified interpreters. And the C E U's must be related to deaf-blind, deaf persons with low vision, and interpreting for deaf-blind and deaf persons with low vision. In addition, there was clarification on R I D, power, privilege, and oppression, P P O C E U's, that we accept and consider these as ethics C E U's in Michigan. And we clarified that the department may waive C E U requirements if the qualified interpreter provides written documentation before expiration due to disability, military service, medical circumstances, absence from the U S, and any other extenuating circumstances. Once the rules become effective, the department will no longer require C E U's to be submitted with your renewal. Instead, there will be an audit process to be implemented within one year from the effective date of these rules. Qualified interpreter attestations will be required regarding the C E U compliance as part of the renewal process. The department will report to the Board the audit findings, and the audit process will also be publicly posted. Qualified interpreters must retain their own C E U documentation for a period of five years from the date of applying for initial certification or renewal. And new C E U's required by these rules will start two years from the effective date of these rules. And I'll pass off the next part to Colleen Curtis.
Hi, Colleen Curtis speaking. I'm going to cover part five and part six. Part five is complaints. So that would be filing complaints, acknowledgement of complaints, complaint notification, investigations. The rules update timeframes for the submission, acknowledgement, investigation, and conclusion of complaints. We allow up to 12 months to submit a complaint. The department will notify the complainant that a complaint was filed, was received, and if it will be investigated within 45 days of receipt, a Q I will be notified of the outcomes of an investigation within 30 days of the conclusion of the investigation. Complainant will be notified of the findings within 60 days of the conclusion of the investigation. And part six has to do with the revocation, suspension, limitation of certification, plans of correction. This is the enforcement piece where, what happens after the complaint is filed. So we added a section, section for the department to request from an interpreter to submit a plan of correction to demonstrate compliance. Added that the department may require retraining, C E U requirements, or issue written reprimands. Clarified that the process for a Q I to voluntarily surrender a certificate. And added language about issuing a notice of intent to revoke or suspend a certificate to conform with the Bureau's practices. Clarified the hearing process and the required steps. Simplified the summary suspension process to align with the Michigan Administrative Procedures Act, and outlined the option for a compliance conference. So I think this concludes the highlights section.
Sorry, that was really loud. I think Larry's going to just close up with a couple of comments before we take feedback.
Okay, excellent. I'll turn it back over to Larry.
And do we need an interpreter switch, or we, we good? Okay. So that is the summary of the rules. We, we realize that the rules have not been released. The proposed draft rules have not been released to you. But you're working with the Board, it's very important that we feel that the rules should be released with the videos, as well as having the voiceover and closed captioning. So those are the last things we're doing, then we'll release them. Just in summary, we, we hope that you'll see that the rules are more concise. You know, we're going from about 40 pages to 21 pages. We think, you know, when you're out there interpreting, you're probably not thinking about, hey, what's rule, you know, nine say? So we want to be more concise with these rules. And then we also want to make sure that we can withstand any challenges. And so that's why you're seeing us rescind some things like good moral character. We're not saying that good moral character should not be part of our review, but we just don't feel comfortable statutorily that we could withstand a challenge on that. And the same for the fees. So there's certain, certain things that we have removed, not saying that they're bad. It's just that we feel if we were ever to be challenged in court on them, we would rather have the act modified to give us clear authority on those items. The things that we're excited about in the next couple of weeks is to, in, in the next couple of months, is to release these to you. And this, there will, once they're released, we will have an opportunity for you to submit, you know, comments to us about, hey, did you think about this? Maybe the wording should be improved here to make it more clear. We're also during this time, we'll be working with our partners from the Department of Civil Rights and the Department of Education, who have already provided comments, but we'll probably have additional thoughts after we start to get feedback from the qualified interpreter, students, schools, and the, and the deaf, deaf-blind, hard-of-hearing community. But we are excited about these rules, because one of the first things we want in the rule set is what are the rights of an individual receiving these services? We want that to be upfront, because the majority of the rules apply to the qualified interpreters. But really, the important part is what is the right of the deaf, deaf-blind, and hard-of-hearing individual when they're receiving these services? The other thing that we're excited about is I think Michigan's going to be in the forefront of trying to figure out how do we get more deaf interpreters in Michigan? We only have just a few certified deaf interpreters in Michigan. We hope this will open up the door and we'll give it a try, and we'll learn from this. And then if we need to make adjustments, we'll make adjustments. The other thing we're excited about is the training opportunity. I think we heard a lot about that from the schools today, about after I get done with my schooling and I'm waiting for my test, I don't have an opportunity to use my skills. So this is really going to provide clear guidance that you can get out there and use your skills. But there will be some limitations to make sure that there is some oversight. And so our qualified interpreters will do that. The main thing about these rules, I think that is most important, no matter what rules, rule you look at, I think the most important, and the probably the one that will probably get the most complaints on. And we're revving up our investigation process is effective communication. You know, we want to make sure that there's effective communication, no matter if you're using V R I or whatever, we want to make sure that effective communication occurs. So this is a very informal process. We want to hear from you today. But we also understand that you haven't really seen the, the word-for-word version, and that there will be a second process for you to provide that input. Once we get that done, what we hope from these types of meetings is that there's no gotcha moment where we thought, jeez, we're already down the road. We got these ready to go, and somebody brings up something and we say, we didn't even think about that. So this is our opportunity to make sure we didn't miss something. After these opportunities, then becomes the formal promulgation process where we actually submit these rules to the legislature, and the legislature will have an opportunity to reject them. If they, if they don't reject them, then they have the force of law. There will be in that process a formal public hearing, and that will be our last opportunity. And the, the formal public hearing, what happens there is, if we have to go back because somebody brings something up in the formal public hearing that we did not catch, we did not think about, then we have to kind of start the process all over again. And we're so excited about these rules and, and some of the new things that are in these rules that we want to make sure that we don't have that moment to where in the formal public hearing, we got to start the process over. But then, once we do that, that will be announced, we have the formal public hearing, and then it will go to the legislature, and if they don't reject them, it will become law. So I think at this point in time, I think we're going to open it up for comments and things that you heard, things that we might not have touched upon that you would like us to be aware of.
This is Colleen speaking again. If we could have, if you'd like to give a comment, if you want to come up to the podium, and then, okay. And if you did want to give your name, you can. If you don't, that's fine too. So.
Colleen, for those signing, should they go up here like we did for, for the board meeting? I think that would be easiest if anyone's signing in front of the backdrop, and thank you.
Thank you, everybody. My name's Lawson McNally, and I am President of Michigan Deaf Association, M D A. I do know that interpreters are trying to. you're doing an interpretation on updating the rules. When we're talking about VRI, you said process with VRI. And I just wanted, do you realize that there is no VRI being provided in Michigan? All of those interpreters come from other states. There's no VRI company. You know, there's VRI companies all over the country. So we're stuck with those interpreters that show up on the screen, and they're not from Michigan. They don't know Michigan signs. I've seen that for myself many times. And so to be honest, oop, let me move over. Thank you, thank you. I'll try to stay and trying to make a connection with them and move closer to them. Okay. You know, there's no, personally, no problem with, with VRI, but things that I've seen, internet's down, right? Misconnection, things freeze, very frustrating. I'm waiting to explain, you know, my illness and my issues. And I've already experienced that myself. And so we asked the VRI people, hey, where are you from? They say, well, I'm from Ohio, I'm from another state. They're from all over. And so when we check here in Michigan, there's no provider. So yeah, how do we apply to the licensing requirements in Michigan? Do you require to see their license if they're providing services from a Michigan hospital that requires VRI use? That's a complaint that I have. People's choice. By being confused with the ADA law, and I was very much involved in the ADA back in the day, back in the 90s, I was involved in that process. And the term effective communication has changed, has changed. You know, effective communication means that the VRI person can provide effective communication, just like an in-person interpreter. But that's not the case. A, it should be a person's choice, what they're comfortable with. Me, the person, it should be my choice. If I want someone in person, I want someone, whoever's gonna interpret for me to understand me, you know, body language, make a connection, you know, that's effective communication. And it doesn't mean the device itself, right? It's, that's my concern. It's effective communication. We use that wording, effective communication. When I see that, we need to make some improvement somewhere. So that's a VRI issue. With deaf blind individuals, it becomes a bigger problem. Deaf, blind individuals cannot use VRI at all. My wife is deaf blind. I've experienced this many times. We go to the hospital, even the doctor in the office, oh, gotta use VRI, have to. And I'm like, no, no, no. And they ask me, well, why don't you just interpret for her? I say, I'm sorry, I'm not a third party. You know, do you remember how many times a deaf can speak out, right? How many opportunities do we have? And we tend to just accept, accept, accept. And so that needs to stop. I can't speak for everybody, but I need you, you know, we're thinking about licensure, certification, how we make the hospitals, the doctors' offices, you know, when they decide to use a device, an iPad, VRI, over an in-person person? That's my question. That's a big question. Michigan has no qualified VRI people in Michigan. So I think that's my comment. And yes, we miss that information. I wanted to see it. I'd be happy to follow up and, and help if need be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ah, there it is. There's my voice. There it is. Sarah Houston here. I just wanted to reiterate again, stuff that I say all the time, all the time, all the time, that I have not yet to see in this draft rule. And again, that is responsibilities of agencies who are providing interpreting services, who are telling people, oh, you can work this job, even though you're not medically endorsed. I've been told, oh, I saw you at work the other day, and it was not me, it was someone else. Enforcement has got to be, again, teeth, and there's gotta be teeth in it. There are people, I have had a person tell me to my face, why, why do I have to be certified? Everybody else is doing it and still getting paid. So if that's the attitude of a general public, which it's not even an interpreter, it was, it was their spouse, you know, to say that to me, well, like, why should, why should we care? Because everybody else is doing it. We've, we've got to put some teeth into these enforcements. We've got to make sure that people understand that you can't do this. And again, agencies who are, I mean, many of us work for agencies, and agencies are pushing, putting out people who are not endorsed, not properly certified, putting them in the wrong positions and the wrong places, encouraging them to go, telling them it's okay, it's not a problem. I've got to see something about agencies. And until I do, you'll see me every time. Thank you.
Colleen speaking. Thank you.
Hello. Can you guys hear me? Perfect. My name is Tarek Fryer, and I am a BEI-1 basic in the state of Michigan. And I just wanted to get some clarification. It seems like from the rules that if a student graduates from an ITP, and they still want to continue training in their skills, and if they go on, go to post-secondary education, they have to be paired with just a BEI advanced, kind of leaving out the BEI basic. I'm not sure if that's what the actual rules are stating, but if that is what it's stating, I just want to caution us against that, because I feel that it is excluding those of us who do hold a BEI basic. And I know that this word, basic, doesn't sound as appealing, but I do want to remind everybody that we still did have to pass the state test. So we are qualified to be in those secondary educational settings. And I feel like if we don't include BEI basics in that, then we are wasting a very valuable resource for graduates to come and learn from us. So if that is not the case in these rules, then I thank you for that. But if that is the case, I would hopefully, I hope that you guys reconsider that. Thank you.
Colleen speaking. Thank you.
Hello. April Zavison. I have a few comments. One, I didn't see it in there, and I know I mentioned this at the, the board meeting, but the associate's degree requirement for the BEI currently, I'm hoping that the rules will address not applying that to the TEP, since there's really no risk in somebody passing the TEP without an associate's degree. They can't actually do anything with that part of the, the test. So if we can allow students to take that early, that would be great. I have a little bit of concerns about what to me looks like an honor system for CEUs, where we're not really, only if they're audited, are we actually making sure that CEUs were completed? I guess I just want to know a little bit more about that, and how the audits come into play, and what that looks like. The, I'm calling it the trainee certification. I can't remember what the official language was, but for students that didn't pass the BEI and want to work with certified interpreters, I love the idea. I am curious about the regulation of it. I think it's important that these graduates have that opportunity. I also think it's important that it's well regulated, so that we don't have anybody taking advantage of that and sending students or graduates that are not yet certified to jobs alone, or with somebody who isn't truly qualified to be mentoring them. The only other comment I have is about the post-secondary moving to a level two. I actually think it's a great idea. I think education is a complicated field. I think it's important to note that from what I read, or what I heard you guys say, it's not just that BEI ones or basic certification can't do post-secondary anymore, but they just have to team with someone of a higher level. That's my understanding. So I think as long as we enforce it that way, I think it's a move in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Miles Atkins. I just wanted to touch a little bit on the NIC certification, the national certification. I am hoping that the rules and regs will address the very gaping difference between the BEI assessment that we give here in the state and the NIC, and how the NIC literally advertises as a entry-level assessment, yet we are seeing a lot of our state interpreters go towards the NIC when they're not able to pass the BEI advanced, and then have access to medical interpreting, have access to legal interpreting. This is frightening for me as a Coda, knowing that somebody couldn't pass a state assessment, but could then turn and take an entry-level assessment, and do work at an advanced level, and do work in a legal level without that state certification. I know that there's some talks about there being like a four-year waiting period once you get the NIC. I would like to see the data on the amount of time it takes somebody to actually get a BEI basic to a BEI master. What average timeframe is that? Is that actually four years? I don't think that that's true. But we're still not assessing skill if we're just giving time. We're saying, oh, you can interpret at, with an NIC for four years, and then you can get in a legal setting without actually doing any of the accelerated work in that environment. And so I would like to see that be addressed within our state. I understand it's a national certification, but I think it should be regulated. And I think we should find a better way to approach that, instead of just putting a timeline on it and allowing state interpreters to just go towards that certification, which is an entry-level certification. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. My name is Sonia Harrison. I'm from the West Side. So I'm wondering if you have any kind of a timeline for when you think maybe the draft would be available? Like, three months, two months, one month? Any concept of time for that?
This, this is Larry. Heather, January, is, is that our target?
So probably for sure by the next Board of Interpreters meeting, you'll have a draft. So we should be able to see it, read it, and be aware of it before the next Board of Interpreters meeting.
We hope so, yes.
Okay. And then, like, I know that mirrored, the state level, already the organization's planning on having kind of a little meeting to chat about getting feedback from interpreters across the state next week. Can we get a copy of that summary? Can that be posted online? I know a lot of things got read pretty quickly, and I wasn't able to absorb all of it. And I probably will have questions, but I, I'm just wondering if we can get access to that summary.
This, this is Larry. So we're not going to publicly post it or release it until the videos at, in cooperation with our board. But if we receive a FOIA request, by law, we have to respond to a FOIA request within five days. So if there is a FOIA request for, for the written version, yes, by law, we have to release it.
Can, can somebody FOIA something to be provided in ASL? I just wonder.
Sorry. I'm sorry. Were you talking the written version, word for word?
What you just put up there.
Oh, the highlights?
Yeah, just the summary.
Oh, the summary. I'm sorry.
Just the summary.
So those, I think we can release. That's fine to really, we'll release those after this meeting. Just know that that is a highlights of what we see right now. It's a snapshot in time. We're getting feedback from MDE. We're getting feedback from various different stakeholders and those in the industry, including this meeting. So know that that is a very, like, narrow snapshot in time, that, that could totally change when the actual, you know, rules in the end. So.
Okay. So I was thinking that you had the draft in English finalized. You were just editing and working on the Signlewood version. Is that incorrect? And you're still changing up the draft also?
We have, this is Larry speaking. We have the first draft written. But like Heather said, it's a point in time, because as we talk to civil rights, as we talk to the Department of Education, as we come back from this meeting, we might be tweaking it. And then, then when we tweak it, but the, when we release the video, it will be the video based upon the draft we currently have, even though we might make some changes just from this comment. And then we will probably, you know, make some kind of document that says, here's the draft we're releasing, but we have already modified these things based upon public comment received to date. And then when we release the video, we will be publicly stating, you have so many days or weeks to give us your comments, so we can move to the next step.
Okay. And then you'll, you'll also make a, a second video that will say, here's in ASL, all of the changes.
The, the second time we will make the video, this is Larry speaking, the second time is before, when we go to promulgate the rules, when we actually submit them to the state. That will be our final version of the rules prior to the formal public hearing. That version likely will be a word-for-word ASL translation of the final rule set. You will still have an opportunity in the public hearing to object to the final rule set, but we'll, we'll be making two versions. This version is the rules as drafted today. The next version will be the version that we are going to submit to the state for final promulgation.
Correct. But when you, when you make this first set of video, this first video, it's going to be on this current draft, you're gonna throw in some adjustments based on what you hear, what you're told, legal or whatever, but you're not going to have ASL of that part? There's not going to be a video to show the ASL of that part? So the deaf people won't get to see that part at all in ASL?
So, go ahead. Oh, yes, sir.
I can say that I promise, I promise, I promise, I promise that the board is 100% determined to make sure we have equal access, period. There will be no English version without ASL.
Of anything.
Every time. End of this.
Got it. Thank you.
There's no one over the others. Everything will be done at the same time.
Okay, good. Thank you.
This is Colleen speaking. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to give comment before we turn it over to the Zoom participants?
Hi, my name is Kirsty Hansel, an OCC sign language interpreter student. I have a question. You said you are dropping deaf-blind endorsement. Can you explain why and what the process to do that? It was just mentioned in the reading.
Yeah. Oops, sorry, it's not picking up yet. Deaf-blind endorsement would be required for all, instead of just those that are, right, Colleen? Am I saying that correctly? Okay, just wanted to make sure I was saying that correctly. It was be required for all, not just for those that are seeking deaf-blind endorsement now.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Colleen speaking. Thank you. Anyone else before we turn it over to Zoom? Okay.
Hi, my name is Valerie Boyer. I just want to say that I'm thankful to hear about the change in the deaf-blind endorsement, and that being a requirement for all interpreters. From my experience, I've seen that vision is a wide range, just as much as hearing is. And not all individuals want to actually self-identify and call themselves deaf-blind, but may have some vision impairment. And so as interpreters, I do feel it's important as professionals that all of us are aware of, and having that training and those skills. So I do appreciate that change. I wanted to ask, just food for thought type question. I don't need an answer now. In, when you were reading, you read about adding consent for VRI. I hadn't thought of that. That's a really great idea. Thank you for those that came up with that brainstorming. Some follow-up questions. I'm wondering about how, how we obtain the consent. So from my experience, when I've been, been a part of receiving consents, sometimes those questions come out, like, we need you to sign this paper so we can provide you interpreting services. That's, that's a little bit coercion. That's not really appropriately legally obtaining consent, informed consent, I guess is the word I want to use there. And then, if we're obtaining consent for VRI, are we using VRI to get that consent? So then maybe to get that consent, we should not be using VRI. We should be using an onsite interpreter to clarify whether or not VRI is appropriate for that. Also, when it comes to VRI and consent, wondering about remote location VRI usage. So not like a meeting such as today, but like, the meeting itself or the encounter is off-site, maybe in a home, or maybe at a park, or in a driveway. When is VRI, is it still appropriate? And then what are the equipment requirements? So can someone just show up to someone's home for a meeting with an iPad and hope that T-Mobile and Verizon's going to connect? Is that appropriate? And then, what's our follow-up for that? What's our auditing quality assurance for that? Also, accountability for other state agencies that also need to follow this. I need to say that I am so tired of hearing people I need to say that I am so tired of hearing people say, we offer an interpreting service. It's VRI. That's it. Period. End of discussion. Oh, we can't hire an interpreter because our company doesn't have a contract with those people and they don't continue to move down the line. And these are state agencies. So the state is making requirements of a whole lot of people, but then their own people aren't following those rules. I'd like to see that changed. Thank you.
Colleen speaking. Thank you.
Smiles again. Uh, thanks, Val. You brought up a good thing regarding the VRI. Um, is it possible to hold, um, for example, if we're using VRI in a hospital setting as a temporary means of access until a live interpreter can arrive? Um, I know at the specific facility that I work at, um, we are bound under, um, joint commission, JCO. And so all of the interpreters that we provide through VRI have Michigan credentialing and are registered on our, our database here in Michigan. Um, we require that as a standard. So we would be responsible for that under JCO and under our department. Um, would that be something that could potentially be added into the rules and regs? Maybe we hold the hospitals and the agencies providing that service accountable because I saw in the, the summary here that we would have interpreters, you know, provide their credentials on the screen, but I'm not sure that that's a feasible, uh, solution because we work with other agencies and I don't, they don't really provide that currently. Um, and so maybe if it was just blanket approved and we only were allowing, uh, VRI services, um, to be provided from interpreters that are actually have their credentials, the endorsements and are registered in Michigan, then maybe we wouldn't have to worry about that actually being on the screen. It could just be done already ahead of time. So anytime a deaf person uses a VRI, they know that that interpreter has the appropriate credentials to be taking care of that situation in that moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, this is Sonya again. Um, so I'm wondering, I think this is a really, really good opportunity for us to, um, or for you to be able to communicate to the providers of the services, what the rules are, and then also how to find an interpreter that we have an online directory. It's not an ideal online directory, but it is there. And so is there a way that you're planning on communicating this new rules and regs specifically to all of the court systems across the state and all of the health systems across the state and all of the education systems across the state and just the, at least the major groups that are utilizing interpreting services on a regular basis that really don't have any idea how it works, how to find interpreters and, and what the rules are. Um, oftentimes I'm communicating what the rules and regs are to a court system or somebody that's calling from an office because they really don't know what the Michigan rules are. And we are getting a lot of calls, um, as interpreters or connections from out of state agencies that are, um, contacting me to provide interpreting services and they don't know that there's rules in Michigan and that they have to follow certain guidelines. So, um, is there a way that you're planning on communicating this new set of rules and regulations to all of the people that are not deaf and not already part of the deaf community, but are going to be using these services? And we want to make sure that they understand them and that they're aware of how that works.
This is Larry, uh, speaking. Yes. So one of our plans is, um, after we get this rule set done, uh, we are a small team. Um, but after we get this rule set done, what we want to do is, uh, the department has a, uh, I'll, I'll call it just a motto, which is to educate before we regulate. And so our plan is to, once we're done with this rule set, we want to get out and educate the, the deaf community. But we also want to get out and educate qualified interpreters and we want to get out and educate the provider community. So we do plan to have a robust education on these rule sets. With that said, though, we will still enforce the rule set even before the education, if there's a violation.
So I have a follow-up question. Um, is there any chance that you could put agencies somehow in the rules and regs or, or some kind of way that you could see agencies as also some level of provider of communication services? Because they are often the ones that are the in-between person who are finding the person to fill the job. And they're not necessarily notifying the deaf person at their appointment that this is the per, the interpreter they've scheduled to show up. Maybe if the deaf person knew ahead of time, they wouldn't, they would be able to communicate that that person's not good for them. So is there a way to somehow add agencies in, even if you can't put them in the rules and regs because they're not cited in the statute or whatever the reasoning is, is there a way to still consider them providers in some sense and communicate these new rules and regs and somehow get them involved in this conversation?
This is, this is Larry speaking. So one is, we're continuing to evaluate this program because it's been with us a couple, a couple of years. And we are talking with our attorneys and our attorneys from the attorney general's office. So our scope of authority is limited to the individuals that we certify there are the individuals that are offering the service, uh, without certification. There's no, there's no question that that's our authority. When it comes to the appointing authority, um, our authority is less clear. So it's not that we don't want to hold the appointing authorities accountable. It's do we have the statutory authority to do that, which might mean that someday down the road, uh, the act itself might need to be updated, uh, to provide that authority to the department. But to make sure that it's clear, we plan to enforce the act on the individuals, the interpreters and tho, those offering the services without the proper qualification or underqualified. In, in that way, we're still going to get the message to the, um, provider community that this person you cannot use anymore. Um, because you, we've already taken action against them. So right now our focus is will be on the individual. Um, we are hoping to partner with, um, you know, uh, civil rights. And we've been in discussions with civil rights about the appointing authority and the jurisdiction and the attorney general's office about the jurisdiction, about where do we go enforcement on the appointing authority? The person that actually hired them and they, and, and it's not coherent with the law. So we are working on that process. We would love to see if you have ideas for language. We would love to see if you have some language for us to look at. We would love to look at it.
So are you thinking then that when you contact the appointing authority, meaning the hospital, not the agency and tell them you can no longer use this interpreter, that somehow they're going to realize that a mistake was made by the agency and do something about it? Or like, what is the?
What, uh, you know, this is going to be a case by case basis. This is Larry speaking. So this can be a case by case basis. But really the message is going to be is Larry Horvath, you were not qualified or you are underqualified for using the service. We have taken enforcement action against you, Larry Horvath. Um, next time we will take steeper enforcement action. So we, we will make sure that the individual, even if the hospital calls them and says, I want to use you. I'm sorry, I can't, you can't use me because I've already had my lesson learned because the department has taken authority, uh, action against me as the individual. Our, our authority right now is, is limited to those that are either qualified or are required to be qualified.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we do have some people on Zoom. Um, oh, sorry. Go, go ahead, Diana.
Oh, I'm short. I guess I'll just have to sign way up high. Okay.
Oh, don't, don't touch. One second, Diana.
Hi, this is Diana. And I wanted to make a comment about, um, the interpreting rules related to education, educational interpreting. And I know that the rules say that parents can agree to accept a unqualified interpreter. Uh, if that interpreter doesn't have a 4.0 EIPA, uh, they, there could be consent from the parents who sign that. But how long is that we are going to be fine or good for? How long can that interpreter stay in that school system? Is there any sort of limitation on that? A three-year limitation that will have to show that the interpreter has been trying to improve their skills? Because a deaf child's, it, the deaf child's education is definitely impacted. Sometimes parents don't even know the impact. Uh, they, cause they think they're, they're hearing themselves and they don't realize the impact that that can have. So I think that's something that we need to take a look into is a time limit for people who are underqualified, uh, working in an educational setting.
Thank you. This is Colleen speaking again. Um, now I'd, uh, like to turn it over to the Zoom comments. Um, Tammy, if you, you're available.
Real fast, Colleen. Sorry.
Sure. No problem.
My apologies to the Zoom community. I was also told that, um, yeah, I didn't hear what I said when I stood up not at the microphone. Um, when, uh, Sonia was commenting. I just wanted to make it clear that the board is committed 150% to making sure that all information is given out at the exact same time. We will have equal access. There will not be English done before ASL. There will not be ASL done before English. Everybody will be on an equal page. So I want to make sure that's clear to the community for that. And I also wanted to, um, just clarification. Sorry, Larry. Some clarification. When you, when you say the appointing authority, are you talking about the hospitals or are we talking about the agencies? Cause I felt like that was a little muddled in there and I just want to make sure I'm not talking about the hospitals. The hospitals contract with agencies who provide interpreters. They provide interpreting services. So I don't understand why we can't regulate them when they're providing, they, they making the money. Let me, let's just be honest here. They're making the money and they give us money, a piece of their money. So we don't even get all the money. So you know what profession that sounds like, right? So we don't even get all of the money, right? And so, but they have the loophole where I can send a BEI basic to, uh, an advanced job. And I'm not in trouble, but they're going to be in trouble because I convinced them to do so. So that's, that's what I just kind of wanted to clarification. I want to make sure, can we regulate those who provide interpreting services to the community?
Uh, this is, this is Larry, um, speaking. This is something we're going to go in more detail at, uh, future board meetings about enforcement and, and make sure that we're clear, uh, for the board as well as the department, that we're all on the same page of what our scope of the authority is currently. And what we would hope it to be in the future, which might take a change in the law. Uh, but that's, um, but and we can talk about agencies that are subcontracted. You know, what's the difference between an agency subcontracted to do the service? The appointing authority still is the courts, law enforcement, um, governmental agencies and any other entity required to, um, make an accommodation under state or federal law. So the BRI agency is just a conduit to the appointing authority, the hospital, let's say. They're the appointing authority. They might use a BRI agency. And then we can talk about what's our authority when it comes to the VRI agency and what's our authority when it comes to a hospital-like setting.
You know me, I'll put a name out there real fast. But I'm talking about those agencies who provide the service that we regulate. They regulate the service. So if I can punish, if Sarah could get in trouble for going to do a legal job, then, and I'm sorry, Sarah. I'm throwing you out there for later work for y'all. Then she should be in trouble for sending me out to do that.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to say, I just wanted to make sure that we are talking about agencies and we're talking about the Communication Access Center, the DEFCANS, the DHIS, the DHHS, those agencies who provide interpreting services that we regulate interpreting services. We want to make sure that those people are held accountable because I don't want Sarah to be able to just, just Sarah can get in trouble because she went out there, but they made all this money off of me and they get away with sending underqualified interpreters. So thank you.
Yep. This is Larry. Thank you for those, the comment. We want to make sure we get an opportunity for people online. So if we could do, um, Tammy. Uh, we're going to do online next. Let's, Tammy.
This is Tammy. The first person, uh, we have is Jessica. Jessica, I am going to promote you to panelist. And you will be able to turn your camera on and sound. Uh, Jessica declined. So, uh, the next person I am going to is, uh, our, excuse me, YAKATA. I am going to promote you to panelist, Yakata. I'm going to promote you to panelist. You can turn your camera on and your sound. There you go.
Okay. I got three minutes, right? Patience with me and first I want to start off with.
This is Tammy. You'll need to turn your sound off.
I need to turn my sound off? Hello? Can you hear me? We're good? All right. All right. So how are you all working with the board or allowing the board to guide you with the rules and regulations? It sounds like you guys are kind of lost and, and they leave a little bit. Uh, but how are you allowing the board in terms to help with, um, forming these, um, new rules, regulations? Secondly, deliver loopholes. How outreach does community and providers to make sure that they are doing properly? Instead of waiting until the appointment or leaving up the agency. If leave it up to agency, the agency is going to just give it to this person and say, sign it and keep it moving. And that person may never know that.
This is Tammy. It looks like we've lost connection. I will read some comments.
I'm back. Can you hear me?
Uh, until I see that she, there she is.
Mo, see a wifi. Um, Miles talked about that. Janky wifi. Um, ensure that we are monitoring students, um, that they're not going out, the agencies are not sending them out for assignments and they're getting paid for them. Um, and then making sure that who they are mentoring with that they're there.
If we can just, uh, this Larry speaking, if we can just suggest that she submits, um, comments to us by email, that would be helpful. Um, since we're not getting a good connection there. Tammy, did you want to read anybody else?
Uh, yes, we have a few written comments. The first one is from Mel1. Will there be new tests for QI basic and advanced? The next comment is from Pam Klock, K L O C K. Will EIPA four plus or RID EDK through 12 be allowed to mentor graduates in educational settings? The next comment is from Shelly Kales, K A L E S. If we are removing the BD endorsement and having them all be able to do DB assignments, how long until the interpreters that don't have the endorsement already have until they cannot do and any interpreting? until they cannot do any interpreting? Like how long of a grace period would they receive? Our next comment is from Interpreter Brook. I am thrilled to hear that there is a provisional license being implemented for people that are waiting to take their test. Thank you for addressing that. I echo the concerns of Sarah, April and Miles. I am concerned that reducing our certification to two levels instead of three is going to allow for agencies or interpreters to more easily take advantage of the lesser certification requirements. I hope that this will be addressed as we will continue to perpetuate the pattern we see the businesses and agencies bending the rules for their benefit. Our next comment is from Katie Fitzpatrick. Is there any research in place to determine what privacy positions are already in place for VRI settings? For example, sharing an interpreter's full name in their VRI screen may not be in compliance with national VRI agencies' terms and conditions. There was also a mention of not allowing people to be coerced or forced into signing waivers, I believe. How do we ensure people are not being coerced? I have seen agencies have deaf-blind individuals sign waivers when no one was there to explain the waiver appropriately to the deaf-blind person. Again, coming back to what safeguards are being set in place to ensure this does not continue to happen. One more comment from Katie Fitzpatrick. What about concerns about removing the deaf-blind endorsements leading to assignments not being appropriately labeled for interpreters to ask more questions about appropriate approaches such as pro-tactile work, low vision, et cetera, in order to dress and prep appropriately? One final comment from Greg. I know a lot of people are on Medicaid. From my understanding, I read long ago that the state of Michigan pays for those interpreters. For those on Medicaid, does this ruling still stand?
Okay, this is Larry speaking. We do apologize that we ran late today, but we do appreciate all the comments that we received so far today. There are going to be more opportunities for more comments to make sure that we get the rule set right or as best, probably never going to be perfect. There's always going to be something to improve upon. But we appreciate everybody's time today and appreciate these comments. I do want to mention, we probably didn't mention, but I do want to mention that we worked closely with two board members in, in drafting this rule set. And, and obviously, as we get ready to release these, we expect to have more input from, from the board as well on how to improve these. And we expect to have more from you guys on how to improve these. So again, we thank you for your time, your comments today. I think there was a lot of excellent comments, things that we need to look at. So that way, when we go to the formal process, we have a pretty good rule set that people say it might not be perfect, but let's move forward because, because there are some important things here, you know, with, with recognizing deaf interpreters in Michigan, the training opportunities. I think there's a lot of improvements in these rules. So thank you to the board members that have provided so many weeks and hours helping us on this. We thank our partners from Civil Rights and Department of Education for their input and future input. And we, we thank you guys for all your input today and in the future soon. So thank you very much.